I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome. The roll has been taken. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on our agenda is to review and approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Hayes, seconded by trustee Walsh. Are there any revisions to be made to the agenda? Seeing none, can we vote to approve the agenda? Approved by all trustees present. Next, we need to approve the minutes for the July 19th regular board meeting. Sorry, that was not the July 19th, June 11th board meeting. Do I have a motion to make the, to approve these? Trustee Walsh, do I have a second? Trustee Wake? Are there any board comments, discussion? Are there any public comments on the minutes? Seeing none, can we vote to approve the minutes? Approved by all trustees present. Now, we're to the public comment portion of the meeting. You have written correspondence in your packet, pages 15 through 17. As a reminder, the public comment portion of this meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for us as board members to respond or for the public to ask questions. Please do not infringe on the right or privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and the acting chair can interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order over three minutes or are personally directed to an individual. Do we have any public comments on items not on our agenda? Please come forward, and there's a button to push for the microphone.
This is from our third annual Intune Missoula event that we had in April. You may or may not be familiar with it, but Intune raises money to help elementary schools provide instruments to students who can't afford to buy their own. We also provide scholarships to allow students in elementary and middle schools to go to camps and choir events out of town and that kind of thing. So it's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to indulge you just for a second, and I hope I don't go over my limit, but I'm a lifelong Missoulian. When I was attending Paxton Grade School in the 1950s, I wanted to be in the band. My family couldn't afford an instrument, and the school system had instruments to loan out back then. They gave me an old beat-up melophone. I was privileged to play in the grade school band conducted by a legendary conductor, Roy Lyman. I took vocal music from another legendary instructor, Jim Cole. Vocal music. I had the opportunity to march in the homecoming parade back in the 1950s, which is a little different. And I also had the privilege to participate in a presentation of Oklahoma that was done strictly by the grade schools band and corral. So I've got some history with all of this, and that's why I'm so excited about the Rotary Club taking this project on, because we think it's so important that kids have the opportunity. So with that in mind, I'd like at this time to make a presentation of a check to, for $8,520 to Missoula County Public Schools for use in scholarships for grade school students to attend summer camps for band, choir, and orchestra, and we hope to continue this project on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Oh, no, sorry.
Announcements from our superintendent.
Thank you. Not a lot to announce tonight. In front of you, you have some very beautiful cookies. They're courtesy of our Spark Arts program. We recently hosted the Arts Integration Conference at the University of Montana last week. Huge success. We had about 360 people registered for the event and attended, and just great presenters, great staff participation, and overall success. And so that was great to see that happen in our community. Very well received and grateful for Sina and her work for that. This is also, had a chance to go to the delegate assembly for the School Administrators of Montana, representing Western Mass and superintendents from across Montana in a process to identify and delineate what our priorities are for the coming decennial study as well as the next legislative session. So that work begins now, and we will continue to advocate on behalf of public schools. So it was a great opportunity there. And also, bittersweet, but this is Pat's last meeting with us. Yeah, do not cheer or applaud. He's promised to come back and give public comments on all items.
Including all items.
Yeah, oh yeah, and all items, yes. Things not on the agenda. Yes. But we say farewell to Pat tonight and grateful for his 20 years leading MCPS, and thank you. Yep. And that was it.
Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The board approves use of a consent agenda to expedite business at our regular monthly meetings. They usually deal with routine matters that might be placed on the consent agenda by the board chair. There is no board discussion for consent and agenda items, as these are routine, but if any member of the board wishes to discuss the consent item agenda, there may be a motion made, seconded, and voted upon to move the item. Are there any such? Seeing none, we have both elementary and secondary items on the consent agenda, so I need a motion for each. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the two consent agenda items? Trustee Witt, and seconded by trustee Mercer. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on these two consent items. All in favor, please raise your hand. Approved by all elementary trustees. We also have two reciprocal, really, consent agenda items for the secondary trustees. Do I have a motion to approve those? Trustee Walsh and trustee Witt, seconded. Any comments from the public or the board? Seeing none, could we please vote to approve those two items? Approved by all the secondary trustees present. From there, we're moving on to new business. No, I'm sorry, to, yeah, new business. Finance, operations, and maintenance. We need to approve the annual renewal of the Montana School Boards Association. The administration has recommended that we approve the annual Montana School Board Association membership. Is there any discussion of this item? Trustee Mercer.
I'm just lost. Didn't we do, what did we do like a month ago?
In my memory, we discussed that we would probably approve this, but it wasn't on the agenda at that time. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the trustee Wake, and seconded by trustee Walsh? All members of the board approving membership in the Montana School Boards Association, please raise your hand. Approved by all trustees present. We also have an approval for renewal of the Montana Quality Education Coalition. This is both an elementary and secondary item. Do we have anything from Pat McHugh about this?
No, this is the same, same membership fee that's been in place since 2022. It's $4,000 a year, so we're recommending continued participation.
Do we have a motion to approve? Trustee Walsh and trustee Mercer, seconded. Oh, you had a question, sorry.
Mine's, I'm sorry, can you run down the entities that exist and what, so your superintendent thing versus this versus the other thing?
Yep. So Montana School Boards Association is an association that exists to support school boards, and Lance Melton is the executive director, does a lot of advocacy work, writes a lot of, or helps write and construct a lot of the bills related to education. And so that's an organization that you just said yes to, very much a school boards organization. The MQEC, the Montana Quality Education Coalition, is actually a smaller component of what is referred to as CAMPS, which is the Coalition of Advocates for Montana's Public Schools. So CAMPS is made up of MQEC, MTSBA, School Administrators of Montana, Montana Rural Education Association, and Masbo. Thank you, Denise. And so each of those organizations have their own entity, their own executive director, and MQEC is one that we belong to. I actually sit on that board as one of the executive directors for MQEC. And really, what it is, is an advocacy group on behalf of all Montana public schools, not just school boards, but also for administrators, also for students, also for teachers. And when legislation is passed that they, that the organization feels is counter to the mission of public schools in Montana, that's the organization that usually we litigate through. So they would retain and hire attorneys on behalf of Montana schools that participate and then basically sue the state. So a good example is they brought the litigation forward for the last charter school bill. And so that's the one that currently has an injunction, and they can't move forward. We're waiting on a ruling any day. So that's MQEC. SAM is School Administrators of Montana, so we pay dues on behalf of every administrator to that organization, and that's what represents the superintendents, principals, meta, MKS, which is, so meta is our technology group, MKS is the special education group, and so that's the delegate assembly that I was just a part of.
Is Dr. Watson that one?
Yes, that is Dr. Watson. Yep.
So we do have a motion. I'm sorry. Okay, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. MQEC is about taking all of the tax dollars and making sure that all districts get inequitable funding. Would that, is that a good summary?
Their, their, the cases have been about adequacy and equity.
Yep.
That's what they've, they've filed lawsuits based upon that premise.
Well, Missoula is, I know last time we had this discussion of givers and takers, but Missoula is and historically has been a taker, right? We benefit from that equalization process.
I think if you look at it from a property tax distribution standpoint, I would say we are giver, meaning we send more to the state than we would receive. And certainly, when the property valuations were readjusted by the Department of Revenue. So it's, it goes back to really what one of the lawsuits was about, which was the equalization, and so how the state subsidizes different districts based upon their relative property tax value. And ours is relatively high, so we're less of a, less of a taker, using that terminology. But then you have other districts that are, that are not at all takers. So we do get some subsidy. We do get guaranteed tax-based subsidy, which is based upon our relative value compared to this statewide calculated amount.
Okay, I think that's where my confusion is. So we do, so some of our property tax dollars do go to fund other smaller districts?
Yeah, that was really prevalent when, after the property tax reappraisal and the 30% jump, and we were sending nine and a half million, and our growth from the state was 500,000 that year. So it was a significant disparity in that year. And it evens out, doesn't even out, but it starts to adjust, and it has adjusted. So the following year, there was some bounce back, but, yeah, Missoula being a higher tax value district is going to contribute more.
Okay, I was confused about that. Thank you.
Yes.
So this MQEC, which is, so primary assignment is a litigation thing, 4,000, but if they engage in major litigation, do they come asking for more money, or how do they fund that?
No, they have a reserve. So while they might collect dues every year from a variety of districts, and I mean, we're talking one from schoolhouses to large double A districts. They build, have built a litigation reserve over time. Yeah, and there's not always a lawsuit, and then some cost more to litigate than others, and so, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a great organization. It has served Montana's public schools well, so.
Any other questions, or are we ready to vote? Okay. Trustee Mercer made a motion, any second. Trustee Walsh. All in favor of approving the renewal of the Montana Equality Education Coalition membership?
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Sorry.
Now, all in favor of approving those minutes.
Okay. By all the trustees present. Okay, this next one is to approve the file quiet title action. This is elementary, and I am going to ask Pat McHugh to explain this to us, because I've never heard of a file quiet title.
All right, so we're asking the board to authorize our attorneys to file a quiet title action on our behalf, so that, and what I was supposed to do is whisper, quiet title action. So this is an action to, to perfect title. So when we are doing our facility work, what we discovered was the Prescott property, a small portion, four lots, is actually owned, titled in the name of the Prescott PTA. And so that school, that deed transferring those four lots to the PTA was in 1938, and so a lot of time has passed since then, and that entity likely doesn't exist. It would be good if it did. We've looked into some minutes to try and find if there is any intent reflected there to transfer the property. So this is, this is what we need to do, this action, in order to get, obtain an order from the court confirming title in the name of the district. So it'll be an interesting process, given the fact that the record, the, doesn't really reflect any address or any names. It has a defunct, nonexistent entity name as the title holder. So this is just a request for the, for the board to authorize, that our attorneys initiate this action on our behalf.
Trustee Mercer.
So I 100% think we need to settle this, but like, and maybe I shouldn't ask this out loud, but, I mean, are we optimistic? I mean, who, why do we think it's ours?
There are minutes that, that reflect the, the, the board discussion regarding these four lots. About a fifth of the building sits on these four lots, so it isn't even like it's out in the playground or back in the unused area. A decent chunk of the building sits, sits on these four lots. It's right on the corner of Breyer and, well, Breyer is the North-South Street, I think. So, yeah, it's impactful just from a decision-making process regarding the building.
One more. What, do we have a timeline thought, like, from you?
No. Yeah, it's, it's, we shared some minute information, and we'll continue to do some research into the 1930s minutes, just to see if, what we can find, but there just isn't a ton out there. So I think our attorneys are just wondering how they'll provide notice. That'll be an interesting process.
Are there any other questions about this item from the board? So do I have a motion to approve the filing of a quiet title action? Trustee Mercer, and seconded by trustee Witt. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, can we have a vote for the approval? All, trustee Wake?
It's elementary.
I'm sorry.
It's elementary.
Oh, sorry, it is only elementary, thank you. Approved by all elementary trustees present. Okay, the next one is a renewal of the lease of space at Missoula County Public Schools' Administration Building by the Missoula Education Foundation. This is elementary and secondary. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, so this item and the next one is requests that the board approve the renewal of these leases, and we're reminding the board that these are leases that are terminable on 30-day notice, so it's with two entities that provide some direct support for our school district. And the renewal is on the existing terms, except that it would be for a three-year term instead of one year.
Do we have a question? Trustee Hayes?
Just a quick question. It says a nominal fee. Can you just tell us what the nominal fee is?
Yeah, and it truly is nominal. It's like $10 a year or a dollar a year, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve this particular lease to the Missoula Education Foundation? Trustee Walsh, a second from trustee Witt. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, this is both elementary and secondary. Vote in favor of renewing this lease?
Yeah, an abstention.
An abstention, yeah. So approved by those trustees and one abstention. The next item you referred to already is the renewal of the lease of space for the Spark Arts Ignite Elementary Group. If you could speak to that briefly, Mr. McHugh?
You bet, and it's, it's similar in the direct link with the, the school district. They, they, well, just recently, as Superintendent Till mentioned, the Arts Ignite event, and it's all MCPS-related services and support for our schools.
Are there any questions from any of the board of trustees? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve this? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Hayes. Are there any public comments on this one? Seeing none, can we vote to approve the lease with Spark for the operation for the benefit of our students? All in favor. Thank you. Now we're moving on to budgets. Multi-year end funding. Pat McHugh will address this one as well.
All right, thank you. So this is a recurring item about this time of year. We asked the board to approve or authorize the district to take certain action with end-of-year closeout, and specifically to preserve any funds that remain through the inter-local agreement, through the multi-district agreement and the inter-local fund. And so this is a relatively recent statutory authorization given to districts to preserve some funds rather than to, to expend to zero, and it applies really to the general fund, and that's what this agenda item is, is all about, is authorizing us to, to the extent we, we can, if there are funds available at the end of the year, to preserve those funds. It helps making sure that the, that we expend them in a more thoughtful and meaningful way down the road.
Are there any questions about this item? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the multi-district year-end funding? Trustee Hayes, a second from trustee Walsh. That's for the elementary. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, with the elementary trustees' vote on this particular item? All in favor. Do I have a motion to authorize for the secondary schools to do the same with the year-end funds? Trustee Wake, thank you. Trustee Hayes, seconded the motion. Any public comment? Seeing none, can we vote on this item? All in favor of approving the secondary recommendation? All approved. Now we're moving to pages 24 through 89 in your packet, and these are all of the school bus stop locations for both the elementary and the secondary schools. I noticed one of them is my pullout, 424. I never knew exactly when the bus sat there, but it does. Just don't try to leave my house at that moment. I'm not sure if we need to have these locations done separately or one, one action. One action's fine, okay. Do I have a motion then to approve the bus stop locations? Trustee Wake, any second. Trustee Walsh. I was going to say that if you look at those pages, the items that are highlighted are places that students must cross the street, and so we've been assured that these are safe for our students. Do we have approval of this item? Wake?
I just have a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
We've had a comment like a couple months ago upon the south, I mean, did that get addressed, or is that still, that's this, and everyone's okay? Perfect.
So law statute requires that trustees annually approve the bus stop locations, which, when you consider a district of our size, I fully expect you all to drive around to every one of these and make sure. But that's part of the reason why we work with our contractor, and we have people in the district who are looking at these. It doesn't mean that there can't be a change in the future. If something were to become unsafe, for example, lots of construction going on around Lowell School, if school were in session, we would probably be having some different conversations around that. But we always try and minimize any kind of crossing of major thoroughfares, highways, those kind of things. That's why you see like a crosswalk installed across from Porter on Reserve that's only for that particular reason.
Yeah, and the equipment is the other piece that has been put in play. The stop arm is now 54 inches. The stop arm is now 54 inches, and it lights up, and that was sort of a four or five years ago requirement. And as Superintendent Hill mentioned, they're reviewed regularly, the approaches, to ensure safety. They look at buildings, they look at trees, and the software we have, they can mark spots that just shouldn't be used as an approach based upon safety. Sorry, it's a lot.
Okay, we do have a motion. Are there any other questions or public comment? Seeing none, will vote to approve the school bus stop locations? All in favor. Approved by all the trustees present. Our next topic, B here, is for approving the tobacco use prevention grant application. If you look again on page 90 of your packet, there's a copy of the grant summary. It provides funds to the schools. Do we have someone here to speak to this?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I'm Brooke Criniger, the Health Services Coordinator. This is Leah Fitch Brody. She's from the Health Department, and the title is Substance Use Disorder Prevention Coordinator. And this is the second year we've applied for this grant through OPI, and this year we were offered $6,400 for elementary efforts and $6,400 for high school efforts. We did have leftover funds from the current year that they allowed us to pre-purchase some things due to some staffing constraints. We got started a little late with some efforts last year, but we were able to implement in-depth, which is an alternative to suspension for kids who are caught vaping, or smoking, or using nicotine at school. And we were also able to implement NOT, Not on Tobacco, which is a cessation program for teens specifically. Both were successful. We got very positive feedback from both staff and students, as well as parents. So we want to continue those efforts, offer Screenagers screenings. We purchased two film memberships for our high schools and middle schools, as well as a Catch My Breath supplemental curriculum for our middle school students to address vaping. Anything you want to add, or any questions? Yes, Tina?
Just a couple of questions. The in-depth program and the NOT program, how many students did you guys have go through those?
In-depth, we had 24 go through, and NOT, we had five.
Okay. And one other question, when do you anticipate doing the Screenager screenings, and how many do you plan on doing for this coming year?
This year, there will be at least one at Sentinel, and then we're talking about a second one.
Yeah, sorry, and that's going to be up to, that will be up to the schools. And so it involves both a screening and then showing this film to all students as well. So they're going to have to figure that out. But Sentinel, for sure, in October.
Okay, but all schools are eligible, I mean, all middle and high schools can screen it if they want?
Yes, and we also, we purchased a membership, which gives us unlimited access to two films. We purchased Under the Influence, and, gosh, there's so many. The other one was addressing like tech and screens, screen use, and marketing, things like that, towards teens. Thank you.
Any additional questions, members of the board? So the administration recommends that we approve the tobacco use prevention grant application. Do we have a motion for that? Trustee Hayes, second, trustee Walsh. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will vote on the approval of the tobacco use grant application. All in favor? All trustees present. The last item is just information, and it's from me. A couple of weeks ago, it seems like eternity ago, I went to a meeting in Helena that was coordinated, well, first of all, the, a group called the EP Promise Foundation invited a woman who is a specialist on school finance to come and speak to legislators and others in preparation for the decennial study. At one point, they asked MTSBA if they would like to participate and maybe have a few people show up. And so the executive director, Lance Melton, said, "Oh, we'll do more than that. You can have it in our building, and we'll pay part of the way." And then we were able to include a lot more people that were school administrators, school board members, et cetera. So there were about 100 people there, and Dr. Marguerite Rosa of the Edonomics Lab was the speaker. It was interesting in many respects because she talked very broadly about school finance and different ways that states approach school funding. Of course, very common to have a per-student kind of, you know, A and B kind of approach. Also, different funding sources, so sales taxes, income tax, property taxes. And then they end up with sort of hybrid formulas that blend student-based, staffing-based, and program-based models for funding schools. She stressed that a key part of all of this is that it be transparent, equitable, sustainable, and flexible. And I think flexible was probably what she said the most. She also gave examples of how individual districts or individual schools have tried to allocate funds when they have areas they want to target. In my own opinion, the problem with many of these were that they don't necessarily work with Montana schools, our unions, and things like that. So for example, she mentioned that a school in South Carolina gives a family a $25 gift certificate for their child's perfect weekly attendance, and that costs the school about $1 million a year. I don't think that's necessarily something that Montana could do. Some of them pay classroom teachers more for having students over the cap, $2,000 to have students over the cap. I don't think, again, that's something that would translate to Montana. But she did also talk about broader issues. She also indicated that the teacher shortage was over, and the room was in an uproar. No one agreed that in Montana, the school teacher shortage is over. And then the next day, she corrected that because she had the wrong numbers from some So it seemed to me that while it was useful in many ways, far more promising are the kinds of legislation that's in past of late, like the STARS Act, HB 515, which is the funding for facilities and technology, HB 567, which was adoption of a county-wide resource-sharing agreements. And I think those kinds of measures, I hope, the decennial study does look at. People noted that for Montana, like I said, our teaching shortage isn't over, that we have high costs and insufficient housing, and that our enrollment disparities are far more pronounced than in many states. So we might have a dozen kids in one school, and Billings West High School has over 2,000. So broad discrepancies. Her final takeaway was that funding formulas must be flexible. Schools succeed when relationships are strong, there's local ownership, school boards make thoughtful trade-offs, and boards are careful stewards of the funding. I did think it was a good opportunity for legislators and school administrators and school board members and others to actually sit next to one another. They tried to mix it up so that there were people from every different venue at the same table. But I think she was, I think, surprised at how knowledgeable all the people in the room were about what goes on in the Montana schools, and particularly, school board members and school administrators. But it was interesting, and hopefully will help in the decennial discussions. So that was my little blurb, yeah.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So you talked about the $24 per week for perfect attendance?
Mm-hmm, 25.
Sorry, $25 per week. Was it successful?
They claimed that it was, yeah, yeah, but it was one point, I think, I figured 1.1 million dollars that they had spent. And it was also kind of a strange issue, because you might have a kid who always has perfect attendance. And you couldn't leave them out. I mean, that would be pretty awful. So it was used widely, and it was just like one school, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Montana's biggest issue seems to always come back to being so vast and rural. We have huge districts and tiny districts, and how do we serve those both really well? Did she mention, like, what's our closest state that has the closest situation that we do? Is there any other state that really has that range?
I'm not sure enough about how schools become districts, because you can think of certainly rural areas like Wyoming or Alaska, but what I don't know is how they split things up. I mean, because some states might have just one big massive, you know, school district.
Yeah, states like Nevada, right? I think there's four school districts in all of Nevada, but when you incorporate Las Vegas, Reno, some of those, they get to be pretty massive. I think the, part of the challenge that Arlene's talking about is the different funding models as well. There are states where they have changed their funding model to reflect attendance, so daily attendance. So every kid is counted every single day, and if they're not there, you don't get money for the kids for the day. So it's a prorated type thing. So it would make sense in the district where kids aren't showing up, like, hey, we're losing money, like, yeah, we're spending a million to get them here, but we're gaining 10 million on the flip side of that. So I think there's just different ways that people are trying to ensure adequate funding for their district.
And of course, we are still one of the quote cheapest, if I can put it that way, in terms of how much is spent on education. I had, right in front of me, five seconds ago, yeah. So, okay, so we spend 1.5 billion less than Massachusetts, who does very well, a billion less than Alaska, 895 million less than Wyoming, and 404 million less than North Dakota. So even our neighbors are doing better. Wyoming has an advantage, obviously. If there are no more comments, we can adjourn. It's...
6:54.
Yes, I can't see it. Thank you, we're adjourned.